Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, April 3rd, 2014. The time is 7:00. I ask you to please call the roll.
President South.
Here.
Trustee Suss.
Here.
Trustee Hammond.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Gatter.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Village Mayor Blair.
Here.
Village Attorney Lee.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Officer President, Village Attorney Katie.
Thank you very much. We have a form. If you'd please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome to everyone who's in attendance here this evening and everybody watching at home. You're welcome to speak at any time during our meeting. You can speak during the time for public comment, or if you'd like to wait till a particular agenda item comes up, you're welcome to speak at that time as well. I just ask that you be recognized by the President and make your remarks from the podium up there so that everybody at home can see and hear what you have to say. First up this evening are presentations. We have a presentation from Commonwealth Edison tonight, who is doing our presentation.
So we kind of have two presentations here, so... So we do have two presentations, myself and Sarah. We both work at the same station, called Elevate Energy. This is Sarah over there. But we are working on a couple different programs. So I'm going to give kind of an overview of the outreach programs I'll be working on here in Riverside over the next several months. And then Sarah will be talking specifically about a program she administers with Elevate Energy for ComEd, which is the residential real-time pricing program. So she'll be talking about that next. So like I said, we are from Elevate Energy. And my name is Sarah White, and right now in Riverside in some of the surrounding areas, the smart grid is being installed and the smart meters are being installed. So who here has already had a smart meter installed? Or... Okay, so a pretty big population here has had the smart meter installed, and you might even have one, but I don't know you have one yet. The way you can tell is it has a 2 at the beginning of the meter number, and it has a digital face. But basically, Elevate Energy as an organization just got a grant from the Illinois Science and Energy Innovation Foundation to do education about the smart grid, what that means for people, and then what the smart meters actually will do for consumers, some new pricing programs that are available to them through those smart meters. One of those is the ones Sarah is going to talk about, but I'm going to talk about in the community, a few different types, some through ComEd, some through some alternative energy suppliers. And I'll also be telling you about a program called the Energy Impact Illinois, which I'll be working on outreach for the community over the next several months, which focuses on home energy efficiency improvements. So just to introduce our organization a little bit, as you can probably tell, we have a pretty wide variety of programs. Our mission is Smart Use for All. We are an affiliate of the Center for Neighborhood Technology, which if you've heard of us, that's probably your current associate. Again, this mission really focuses on community sustainability, so that's why I'm really passionate about this work. I'm interested in the environmental aspect, but also with energy efficiency. There are opportunities for people to save money and to have a social mission, so this for all part is really important for us. So as a field organizer, which is my position in the organization, my goal is to be a kind of energy advisor or advocate for residents in Riverside, the communities that I'm working on surrounding Riverside, to help them figure out what's going on with energy, what option is going to be the best for them, just kind of sort through all the programs that are out there and see which ones, if any, will work for them and help them kind of go through that process and go through the sign up and things like that. So I'm here to answer people's questions about energy and help them get signed up for those programs. And then also, there's the money-saving aspect, so I'm helping people save up to $500 per year through the Energy Impact Illinois program and the dynamic pricing programs that are available through the smart meters. So just to give you a quick overview, the smart grid system is being rolled out all across the country. It's being rolled out really quickly here in Illinois right now. Basically, what the smart grid is, is it's bringing our electric grid up into the 21st century, so everything's going to be digital, it's just going to be a lot more reliable so that they can detect and fix outages more quickly. They don't have to wait for a certain number of people to call ComEd and then send people out in the trucks. They just will be able to tell where that outage is and what kind of outage it is. It'll also be kind of a two-way system that allows people to choose their energy more freely, so there will be, instead of one kind of big power plant at the top giving power to all the little guys, it's going to be a kind of decentralized system, and it's going to be easier to incorporate kinds of energy like solar, wind, renewable energy. So it's just a little bit more of a decentralized system, which makes it a lot more efficient since right now a lot of the energy is actually wasted, and we hate for that wasted energy because it's going from a big power plant to homes. So it'll be more efficient that way. And then we're also going to have more information and more choice. So with this program, with the smart grid, especially when you get your smart meters, you'll be able to see how much energy you use every single hour of the day. So this is really good. You know, if you don't want to have this information, that's fine, you don't need to get it at all, but residents here who have the smart meters are going to be able to see this and going to be able to think about whether they want to start tailoring their use, their energy use to save money with these dynamic pricing programs. So I'm not going to really go over the real-time pricing, because Sarah is going to talk about that next, but programs I'm talking about outreach, talking about to residents and seeing if they're interested in one and helping them sign up are the real-time pricing and then time of youth pricing, which is similar to the real-time, but I'm not really going to get into that right now. But basically, I'm just letting people know that these options are available for them, that are different kind of pricing options for people who have this smart grid. This is also real-time, so I'm sure Sarah will talk about this. Okay, so just to go over the other program I'm working on besides general smart grid and smart meter education for residents of Riverside is the Energy Impact Illinois program. This program is in line of government, nonprofits, and utilities. So on the nonprofit part of this, so my role again is to kind of be an advocate for the community, help people find out where they're losing energy in their homes, and then help people go through the construction process and apply for rebates that are available through NICOR gas. So I'm a resource for them in the community. Sometimes it can be hard to negotiate with the contractors and things like that, so our program offers help with that. And that's open to all residents of Riverside and the surrounding communities. So like I said, it's open to all homeowners who want to save 50% of their energy, which basically translates to saving money and making home more comfortable. And it's not income-dependent, so everyone is eligible if you live in a single-family home or a two-bedroom building. And then just so trustees and all the residents that are here know, since you're at the meeting, you probably care about your community, you want to know how this is actually going to help, well, it offers reduced toxic assessments, so helping people figure out where their home is losing energy and losing money. And then we also offer loans, and most important thing is the rebates from NICOR. We help people apply for those and qualify for those, which are up to $1,200 for air sealing and insulation work. So especially here in Riverside, Sarah and I were just talking about all the beautiful homes that are here and the historic homes. Sometimes those can be drafty and things like that, and just maybe these upgrades can be really important to help people be able to actually stay in their homes and make their homes more affordable. Then we also have our trained and certified workforce of contractors. Basically, what this boils down to is it helps people save money on their energy bills since, you know, especially this past winter, a lot of people's heat was probably kind of flying out their attic. It helps prevent that. And then it helps make people more comfortable, which arguably is even more important than helping save money because no one wants to be freezing cold when they get home from work and just try to relax in their home. And it can also boost home value, and so we can talk about that a little more afterwards if people are interested. So these are some of the benefits of this program. And like I said, I am working here in the community on these programs over the next several months, so basically I'm looking to connect with organizations where I can give presentations. If you know any of your neighbors who would be interested, I would love to talk to them. And I just want to let you know that I'll be working on these programs in the community for the next several months. And I'll pass around a signup sheet if you have an organization or as an individual you're interested, but are there any questions right now? All right, well, I'll pass out the sheet, and feel free to write down any contact information so I can be in touch with you about doing outreach on these programs. Thanks so much for your time. I'm Sarah White.
I also work at Elevate Energy, which is a nonprofit in Chicago, but I work statewide. And I specifically work on ComEd's residential real-time pricing program. And the ComEd RRT program, it's what it stands for, is a program that's available to all residential customers. It's a supply option, just like ComEd's fixed rate or another alternative retail supplier's rate or municipal aggregation rate. So I wanted to briefly help and talk to your community about it because it uses a little bit more advanced meters. And while the program has been around since 2007, a lot of people don't know about it. We see savings of around 15%, and the savings vary based on person to person, but it's a little bit different way of thinking about using electricity because it comes down to not how much you use, but when you use it also. So I have just a few slides to kind of illustrate what the program is, talk about Elevate Energy. Again, we're the nonprofit organization that does all the marketing and community outreach and participant support for the program, and we do a variety of just energy-saving programs, and this is one of them. So this is how the program works. It's been around since 2007. There's over 9,000 people, or households involved in the ComEd area. Up top, that's the San Mateos, they live in Oak Park. They've saved over $1,500 with this program over a few years. For them, it's kind of a game. They really like to see their energy use reduce each month, and they've talked about how they've replaced every light bulb in their house except the one in their freezer because they can't find a CFL small enough. That's the Rosen's down in Elmhurst. They're a family of five with some really cute and energetic little boys, and the dad really likes to use the program to kind of illustrate energy savings for the family. So this program is a great fit for a lot of different people. The main thing that you need to do on the program is be able to shift your electricity use to when the prices are cheaper. So as I said, on average, participants have saved over 15% on their electricity supply compared to the ComEd fixed rate, so that's what we're comparing here. And so most of you right now are probably on a standard fixed-rate contract, so that means electricity costs the same amount no matter when you use it, 3:00 AM, 3:00 PM, you're probably paying the same amount. What's different and unique about the ComEd residential real-time pricing program is that the price you pay varies hour to hour based on the wholesale market price for electricity, and that's based on demand. So basic supply-demand rules apply, and you can save money if you're able to shift some of your electricity use the times that the price is lower than the fixed rate. That's how you save money on this program. What does that mean for you as a regular consumer? That means maybe running your dishwasher at 7:00 PM rather than doing it in the summer, or doing your laundry on weekends. We see that nights and weekends are typically cheaper times to use electricity, and also there's some seasonal things, too. So these are the program basics. There's a .39 per month participation fee. The savings that we quote are per individuals are after that fee has already been made up. You need to be on the program for 12 consecutive monthly billing periods, and that's because there's kind of a seasonal nature to prices. We want to make sure that you're looking at the big picture. You also have your meter replaced, so if you don't already have a smart meter, you'll have an interval recording meter put in at your house so that you can measure your electricity use. This also gives you access to a lot of great energy information for you. Here in Riverside, it's all smart meters, so you guys are set and ready to go, which is a great plus. Not everyone's a good fit for the program, but there are a few things that you can check and see if you aren't. You first need to be a residential account. You need to have ComEd as your electricity supplier. If you're currently on municipal aggregation rate and you want to opt-in to something like this, you need to leave that program first. This is why it's a good time, and I wanted to come talk to you all, too, because I know you're considering signing up for another municipal aggregation contract. Your average monthly bill needs to be above $40 a month. We see participants have lower savings if their bill is $40 a month or higher. And then you also need to have some flexibility in order to take advantage of those lower prices during different times. The summer is the main time that you need to watch out for higher prices. That's when we see some seasonal elevation of prices. So there's a lot of different ways you can sign up, online, over the phone, you can call us, there's a revenue moment. If you're at all interested in the program, we recommend that you give us a call. We have a dedicated call center in our office, and we talk people through whether or not they're a good fit. We routinely tell people if we don't think that they are, we can't prevent you from signing up for the program, but we'll advise you not to if we don't think that we would save her. Again, we're a nonprofit, and our mission is to educate people about energy use, so that's really what we're doing in front of the cameras. This is a typical real-time hourly price pattern. As you can see, all fall into spring, the price stays pretty low in the summer. In the middle of the day, the price is usually hotter or higher at the hottest times of the day, when everyone's cranking their air conditioner between noon and 5:00. So we provide participants with a lot of different strategies, like pre-cool in your house, things like that, in order to avoid higher prices during that time. So there's a lot of different ways you can check prices, too, by going online or giving a number or call, but if you keep those general price patterns in mind, that's what we recommend, and then we'll send you an alert if the price is going to be either 10 cents per kilowatt hour or higher, or 14 cents per kilowatt hour or higher. So you don't need to be monitoring prices at all. This isn't a huge change in your behavior. You probably aren't doing a lot of these activities at times when the price is lower anyway, but we will send you an alert if the price will be higher. So these are the main times you need to watch out for higher electricity costs. And like I said earlier, it's just doing things like running your dishwasher at night, maybe plugging in big ticket items at night, or doing laundry during weekends, or early in the morning when the price is lower. It's also a really, really great fit for electric homeowners because they're plugging in their power at night, and so they can take advantage of the lower prices. Sometimes the price even goes negative, which means they'll pay you to charge up your car or to run your dishwasher or to do your laundry at that time. It's kind of rare to kind of be unicorn of a price, but I get pretty excited when I see that the next day that the price has gone to negative 2 at 2:00 in the morning, something like that. So if your car was plugged in, they would be paying you to charge up at that time. The other great thing is that we are enhancing communication about your savings with the program. So we'll send a monthly bill comparison email that will compare what you've saved on the program to the ComEd fixed rate. We also send two paper reports a year, and there's a bill comparison tool. So this is my bigger part. On the bill comparison tool, this is how you log in if you are a participant. You get to see your, every single bill with ComEd since you've been on the program, and you get to see your savings, both the supply and overall. And if you click on any one of those month's bills, then you can see your electricity usage for that month. This person has been on the program for multiple years, so you can see it tracked over time. This is really great if you've done energy upgrades to your home or you've just made a conscious effort to change your energy habits. You can see that for now in your bills. If you click on any one of those months, it'll give you your electricity consumption for each day of the month. If you click on any of those days, it'll give you your electricity consumption for each hour of that day, and how much it costs you based on the price. So again, all that information is there if you want it. A lot of people don't ever look at it. Some people download it and make Excel sheets, do whatever you want. You can always call us, too, and we can help explain the information to you, but it's just really cool that all that information is there for you to access if you want. So again, ComEd doesn't care where your supply, electricity supply comes from. You could be on the fixed rate, or this program, or municipal aggregation, doesn't matter to ComEd. No matter who your supplier is, though, they will continue to deliver your power. So just a quick review of your electricity pricing options. From ComEd, you can be on the standard fixed price rate, or you could be on the residential real-time pricing hourly rate. You could also be with a different electricity supplier. There's a bunch of different rates available, or in certain communities, there is municipal aggregation like you're asked to do in Riverside. And as I said before, no matter who is your supplier, ComEd will continue to deliver your power. So if you're interested in understanding your rate actions, these are resources for the members, the Utility Board, the Consumer Advocate, the Illinois Commerce Commission, and then ComEd. And if you're at all interested in learning more about this program, we recommend you go to the website or give us a call. Again, we can take a look at your bills with your permission, and we can let you know if we think you're a good fit for the program or not. Are there any questions? I have to go to the man.
Any questions? When you're on the real-time pricing, what is the average price that a resident could see? If you follow the examples of doing your dishes at night or, you know, whatever, what is your average? When I looked at the website, it said 4.5 cents a kilowatt hour.
For that hour, for that specific hour.
Right. But those numbers don't include all of the charges that ComEd add as like the fixed rate. So what, 4.5 is really how much of the supply side?
It's the supply, if I'm understanding your question correctly and if my answer is what you're looking for, please ask it again. So these are the average supply kilowatt-hour prices, and this is from the past year, but it changes all the time. Obviously, the market's always changing. So you can see that it's just the per kilowatt-hour price, which makes up the supply portion. And the prices that you are charged on your real-time pricing program are just the wholesale market price from PJM, which is the grid operator, passed right through. There's no markup on the price. It's just the wholesale market price.
So when I see 6 cents at the peak, it's 6 cents. There's nothing on top of that other than the 39 cents.
That's the supply charge, yeah.
Right. So there obviously is a transmission charge.
And again, there's capacity charges. There's lots of line items on your bill, but that's the supply charge.
Okay. That's where I'm getting at. On the supply part of my bill, what is all the charges on the supply part? Because right now on my supply part, it says direct energy, 4.88 cents fixed rate. And then that multiplies by my kilowatt and gives me my total supply. Under this program is 6 cents what I'm going to see, or is it going to be 6.5 cents or 7 cents because I have these other little charges? So on supply, what will I see?
You'll see, they'll be charged the rate at that hour.
Got that.
That you were using the electricity. And then the capacity charges, and I'm not an expert on all the line items, but you should call our call center, or I can get back to you with the answer, because they're really good with where the line items go in. I think the capacity charges calculated just a little bit differently for residential real-time pricing customers, so things are in a little bit different place on your bill. But I do have a program for sure that addresses that more specifically that I can leave with you.
Okay. And how does, how does the real-time pricing work with the, if I had a fixed rate of, say, what was ComEd's fixed rate price last year?
I believe it was around $5.
Five and a half?
Or so, yeah.
Okay. What happens if we have a winter like we have again and prices spike?
Right.
Will real-time, well, in essence, real-time pricing can be over fixed pricing.
Right, yeah. So there is some volatility in the market, and that's why it's important to shift your electricity use the times when the price is lower.
But my question is, if the prices fluctuated to a point, could even the lower prices be more expensive than the fixed prices from ComEd? What guarantee do you have that even if you change your consumptions, your patterns, that your prices, that you actually receive a savings?
Yeah, there's no guarantee whatsoever because it's just the market price, and so that's the risk that you take on in this program. But as we've seen with participants, this winter was kind of crazy with prices. We've never seen prices act like that in the winter, but we are seeing that catch up in the general fixed-price contracts. I think a lot of the aggregation rates are being quoted much higher than before, and that's because we had elevated prices in January and February of this year. So what happens in the marketplace, in the wholesale market, eventually gets translated to fixed-price contracts and whatnot. So we're all going in the same boat there. It's, you need to ask yourself if you're a good fit for the program based on when you use electricity. So these are the averages, and so if you typically use power, most of your power in big-ticket items like laundry, things like that, during evening hours, in the past, those prices have been lower during that time. So that's why you're able to shift your use and take advantage of those lower prices.
But there's no guarantee that even if you shift your use, that the prices will decrease.
So we've seen the savings of around 15% or more, and that really adds up over time. Your individual savings vary based on how you use electricity, so that's the number of questions we get, is how much can I save? And the answer is, well, it depends, which is, can be frustrating for some people, but the more you shift your use, the more you have the potential to save. There's about, oh, a little over 20 people in Riverside who are on this program right now. A lot of them have been on the program for several years, since it's been around since 2007, and many people have surpassed over $1,000 in savings in those three or four years that they've been on the program. So over time, this really adds up, and it's important to take that big picture view because there may be one month where you lose money, there may be another month where you save $25, and maybe another month where you save $15. And that's another reason why we encourage and ensure that you're on the program for a full year, so you have that savings opportunity and you get to see the big picture of kind of like the whole marketplace.
And that notion you just said, over a full year, and people need to know that if you sign this up, you're locked into this program for a year. You can't opt out.
Right.
You're in, you're in, you're in both feet. What effect will the new rates that ComEd come out with in June have with the real-time pricing?
Very little. The fixed rate is the rate that we compare your savings to. So if the ComEd rate goes up and your saving, and your habits stay the same and the prices were the same, then your savings would look like more than were down. That's just the barometer that we compare your electricity savings to.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone in the audience? Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out. Peter, since we're on the topic, do you want to kind of fill everybody in where we are in terms of our aggregation program?
Well, the timing, the reason we had asked for this presentation this evening is, the village has participated in two separate biddings for our electric aggregation program, and in both instances, the bid results came in higher than we anticipated, and in fact, the rates were pretty close to what they're estimating the ComEd rate will be come June. And so, working with the collaborative that we are a member of, or cooperative that we are a member of, we are going to be going out to bid one more time before the village will have to make a decision of whether or not we wish to suspend the aggregation program for a one-year period and re-enroll in the ComEd program, but then by doing that, residents would be eligible to participate in this program if they so choose. So we should have something back to the board probably in, I'm hoping, May at the latest, for the board to kind of discuss and decide how to move forward.
And then we have to move, if we decide to go with ComEd, then we'd have to let residents know about this program pretty quickly because if they sign up two months later, they're still locked in for a year.
Well, even if, even if we go with the electric aggregation program, homeowners would always be able to opt out at no charge and enroll in the program if that's what they wanted to do, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Peter.
Can they also opt in at any point if we did the aggregate so that if they're locked into this for a year?
And then after, yes, they can, they can get onto the aggregation program at a later date.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, it's time for public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Gallagos, Mr. Spat?
Alex Gallagos, 3234 South Harlem. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you in the Village Board on behalf of the Lions Club tonight, and I have two items to speak of. First item is Person of the Year. Each year, the Lions Club and Chamber of Commerce honor a person who, over a period of time, has benefited the community through time, volunteerism, resources, et cetera. Nominations for Person of the Year are being accepted from the Lions Club. Anyone wishes to nominate someone should send those nominations to the Lions Club at 3234 South Harlem. The deadline for that is Friday, April 25th, and that Person of the Year will be named at the Steak Fry, a chamber event in June. The second item I have to speak of from the Lions Club is the Annual Chicken Dinner. Annual Chicken Dinner will be held here at Town Hall on Sunday, April 27th, from 11:30 to 5:00. Tickets for adults are $12 apiece. to 5. Tickets for adults are 12 dollars apiece. Children 9 and under are for six. And tickets can be purchased at the door or in advance from R.K. Jewelers, or you can contact me at 708-442-5704. And sir, that's all I have to speak of tonight.
She has tickets, too.
And trustees have tickets as well, some of them are members. And I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Donald Spatney, 111 Woodside. I wanted to talk about the Swan Pond. I read that article in The Landmark this week. I feel like Robert Reich, who said he could fly, he could save the government money because he could fly in coach. He didn't need first class, he was so small. You know, I hope we're going to have some, really get into this subject, because the idea that $15,000 is going to fix that wall is simply preposterous. I assume if they were only talking about one little space where it's going to cost $15,000, that thing's north of $50,000 or $75,000 now and climbing. And every time we have a flood, it's going to tear out more and more of that wall. And, you know, it should be fixed to the standard that the civilian conservation corps built it properly, in other words, not like this last thing that the Army Corps did there for $15,000 bucks. It's probably going to take out another 10 feet of the wall every time we have a flood in three or four places. You can see where it's working in around there. And those rocks are loose, and it's not going to take much, you know? And this river comes up seven feet, we've got to remember that. So I think, you know, you're going to increase the cost of this job the longer you delay it. It's going to increase exponentially every time there's another flood. And, you know, I don't know what to say, but I think somebody better get on it pretty quick. And not just down here in the corner. By the way, I noticed today that the big culvert that leads down from the river, from the library hill, the east side of it, there's a piece of old wall that's going to go in the next flood. It's all torn up, and it's ready to flop out. So we got to, if we get any flood that comes over down there, that's going to take that out as well. And, you know, there's, if it had been fixed properly, when there were only two small breaks, we could have done it for $20,000 or $15,000. Now, it's considerably more, and the debris is all over everywhere and down in the river. And there was one other thing important I wanted to tell you, but it escapes me. Oh, yeah. Any fishermen with a big net, we've got some nice 35, 40-pound carp swimming around in that water there. And they're going to be, we're going to be smelling them shortly, so if anybody wants to get in there. I tried to talk a guy into doing it yesterday, but they're this big.
They've actually been removed. Our Public Works Department went there yesterday, removed them, and put them back in the river.
Oh, good, because I was there about noon, and they were motoring, you know?
And Mr. Spatney is correct. The $10,000 that he's speaking of, that is not to repair the whole wall. That is to repair a section of the wall that has caved, as well as to shore up sections of the path that have also been compromised because of the water coming over.
Yeah, I figured that's what they're, that's down here in the corner, right?
Right, right. Public Works is looking, and we are going to be working with our village engineer to determine what we would need to do in order to possibly reinforce that wall. And that's probably something that we'll be bringing back to the board at a later date.
Okay. Because I think, you know, it should be, professional stone people should set those blocks. They weren't setting.
You don't want me going out there resetting them?
Well.
I want to see you catching the carp.
Fortunately, I'm too old to be involved in that project.
Kathy and I went out there, and I told Kathy I'm not going in the mud to rescue the fish, so we called Public Works.
There you go.
But your name is Pietro, so that's stonemason.
It is. My dad's a carpenter, so.
One guy told me he wanted to smoke them. Seriously, so I mean, smoke carp.
Mr. Spatney, before you leave, did I read in the manager's minutes or something that you donated like 17 trees to the village?
Yes, Mr. Spatney did make a donation to the village in which we will be utilizing that donation to plant a number of trees in the Swan Pond area there.
Yeah, 26th, I think, we're going to plant some trees. I don't know how many it'll come to. But, you know, the ones that I donated in 2007, when my class did, you know, they're so beat up and everything. I hope we could try to see if some of those could be scooped and straightened.
Mike is actually looking into that.
So I just wanted to direct an attention.
Thank you. Where's my press agent?
Thank you.
Okay, well.
I have to pay by the minute to be here.
The culvert pipe that was severely eroded around the bend at the corner there, and a good part of it is exposed at the moment.
Right. That is the price that he's talking about.
Right. But I think we should look at the duct bill that's on the end of that culvert. It is allowing water to come back into the park. And when something gets lodged in it, as when I went down there, there was a large, probably four-inch diameter piece of log jammed in, sticking out of it, that had traveled through the culvert pipe. It's allowing the water to backflow in the park. And the design that the Army Corps came up with, I really would love to see some sort of a gate valve on that culvert pipe. And we all watch the weather. We all know when it's going to rain. We all know when the park is flooded. And when the water seeks its own level, then we can open or close that gate valve to prevent backflow into the park. Pretty simple valve, very inexpensive to install, simply cutting the pipe and splicing in the valve. So I'd like to look into something like that, if possible.
Referee, 262 Lionell Road. I'd like to share with the board my thinking of the events at Swan Pond the last couple of years, and the change in the hydraulics of the river since the work has been done. It's based strictly on observation, about 40 years' worth of it. Before, the dam was notched and channelized by placing a stone riprap upstream of the dam, and those flats raised alongside of that channel. At high-water times, my observations was that the water flowed into that low-water area between the west bank of the river and First Avenue. You could get two or three feet of water in there along that entire length of First Avenue. Several hundred feet acres of water could be retained there. We all know how wide the river was at the dam, the amount of water that was retained there. Guess what? In the last two years, that hasn't been happening. The water has not been backing up flooding that wetland to First Avenue. And obviously, it hasn't even risen up over the riprap to get to the higher flat, just downstream, upstream of the dam. Guess what? All that water is now coming into Swan Pond. That's my opinion. We have now, Swan Pond has become the primary retention basin for that water. I don't see that changing. I'm afraid that the events we've suffered this year and last, we're going to see suffer, we're going to suffer in years to come. The hydrology of the river has been changed. We no longer have those wetlands available to us to retain any of that water before it gets to Swan Pond. It's evident to me that we're not going to get any use out of Swan Pond if we think we're going to get use out of it as a recreational area. Perhaps we just have to acquiesce to the fact that Swan Pond is going to be a retention basin for the Des Plaines River, the primary retention basin. Perhaps we'll have to give up trying to keep it clean. Maybe we should just let it return to its natural floodplain basis. Think about it. Yes, we're going to have to keep repairing that wall, and keep repairing that wall, and keep repairing that wall forever, probably, in the path above it. Before, two years ago, of course, there wasn't a hard-surface path there, as we all know. We walked it hundreds, thousands of times on the gravel. And when the water came over the wall, it washed the gravel into Swan Pond. And now we have some destruction of that pathway, but more importantly, we have a tremendous amount of debris going over that wall, knocking the wall out, and flowing into Swan Pond. I'm not convinced that there's a solution to that with the current hydraulics of the river as a result of the notching of the dam.
Joe, I don't know if it's necessarily the notching of the dam. I watched a congressional thing on TV. My son sent it to me today. He's a, he works for the Illinois State Waterset down in Champaign, that in 2013, every state in the Union, all 50 states, had a flood issue. And out of the last 61 FEMA disaster-related issues, 41 of them were flood issues. So basically, what that's telling me is this isn't just what's happening on Des Plaines River. This is what's happening all over our country.
All over.
And it's not necessarily the reason of a dam being removed, as, and this could get controversial, but it has probably more to do with our behavior and what we've done to our environment over the last, you know, centuries. So, you know, it's a very interesting, it's a very interesting video that I watched today, and it's eye-opening, that flooding is not, is here to stay and is not going away.
Yeah.
And, you know, we need to do whatever we can to mitigate.
Do we want Swan Pond to be a primary retention basin for that flooding? Are we going to acquiesce to that? It's interesting to note that the flapper valve does stay open and allows water to flow both ways. That's problematic. Interestingly enough, maybe Michael Foley will remember this, he's lived in the town a long, long time, there was another culvert north of that, of that new one, that did drain Swan Pond probably in the 40s and 50s, before I moved into town in the late 60s. And it's been either intentionally blocked or silted for a good 20 years. But now we see it. It's been eroded, and you can actually, go down there, you can actually see that there was, in fact, another culvert before we get to the current one.
Can I, can we let the residents have their say before we start talking about things up here? Did you have anything else, Mr. Ray?
That's my feeling, thank you.
Did you want to comment on what Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I do. You know, over 100 years ago, 2/3 of Swan Pond was completely underwater all the time, every single day. There was an island there, it was called Picnic Island. The river is trying to go back to its natural path. And to your point, Mr. Ray, when the notching of the dam, I have seen on just two occasions where the water has crested the notched area, the dam and water has backed up behind the businesses along Ogden Avenue there into what used to be a marshy area. I think by notching the dam, the river was actually redirected and directed back into its normal path. Now, you know, we had the main dam, we had the Horseshoe Dam, we had the other dam. There were actually three dams that were moved. And now the river is actually on a course. If you look at where the gravel has always been deposited into the park, that was the natural entryway before the small Fairbank Dam was built. That was the natural entryway for the river. It flowed in there, and it came out by the library. There was a bridge that, when it came to the bottom of the sledding hill, the bridge went over to Picnic Island. There are pictures of this from Olmsted in days. I think that if we are going to be dealt the card of having a park that floods on a regular basis, then we need to be more proactive in how we drain the park and get it back to normal use. This culvert pipe that the Army Corps installed for us, not only is it set at the wrong elevation with the wrong kind of valve, but it's also way undersized as far as the amount of water that's trying to be discharged back into the river. To Mr. Ray's point, there was a larger culvert up north, closer to where the old Fairbank Dam was, and that did a very good job back in the day of discharging the water. There's also was several other culverts up in the Indian Gardens area that helped lower the level upstream of the dam. So I know that we've been dealt this card, the dam is gone, we can't replace it, but we can collectively look at ways to mediate these problems when the river does flood. And I really think that, having not been on the board and not part of the decision of the village to notch the dam, I really don't think that we, as a village, did a close look ourselves of what the aftermath was going to be. We relied on the information that was fed to us by the government and via the Army Corps of Engineers. Now that here we are, and we've had two large floods, a nice flow that has actually damaged most of the trees in the area, I do remember that happening when I was a kid, but not like it was this year. So I would really like us to, instead of complaining about it, start looking at areas that we can be proactive in the draining of the park. The river wants, all rivers want to go back to their natural course. It's man that dictates where the river goes, but the river ultimately wins, and it wants to go back to the way it flowed. And the way it flowed was above the Fairbank Dam. It came right in the park. And now that the notch is there, and all that riprap stone is above the dam, if you look from a canoe in the center of the river, you can see where the channel has been altered. And it's actually putting the river back on its natural course. I invite anybody who's got a kayak or canoe to go out and sit in the middle of the notch and look up the river, and you can see how we altered, the Army Corps altered the path of the river. Because remember, it used to flow over a 300-foot dam. Now it's flowing through a notch that's 150 feet and directing it where it goes. That's my feeling.
Mr. Brockway?
Yes. President Sells, trustees, and the administration. My name's Randy Brockway. I'm a resident here, 154 North Gate Road. And I've got to take a second to just comment on the Swan Pond thing. I do agree with trustee Ballereen and trustee Foley, that these are bigger events, big watershed events. Certainly, once that water's in Swan Pond, we need to get it out of there quicker. And I think there was some miscalculation or some failure in the construction or the design of that outlet structure. So I appreciate you keeping an eye on that, trustee Foley. And Joe Ballereen, maybe you could help us with that global warming issue.
That's government.
Okay, all right. I'm here to speak today just to urge the committee, to urge the trustees to form and fully support this ad hoc committee that is being proposed tonight. I think it's later on for discussion. I'm going to have to leave. But the ad hoc committee for the First Avenue and Forest Avenue pedestrian bridge or underpass, I want to thank Doug Pollock, trustee Doug Pollock, for bringing, putting this, getting this on the agenda. And certainly, Bob Up Hughes for agenda, and certainly Bob Up Hughes for keeping this issue alive over the last three or four years in his paper and in his columns. There is some renewed interest, and I'm probably more optimistic about the bridge and the pedestrian issues over at First Avenue than I've been in a long time. President Sells and Peter Scolera have been attending some meetings on the First Avenue path, and that's starting to take shape and take form. It looks like it might happen in the next couple of years. So, with all of this coming together, I think it is a very good time to have this committee, to form this ad hoc committee, and really look at the feasibility of a bridge or underpass, a pedestrian safe crossing at First Avenue and Forest. I will have a daughter going, using that in one of these coming years, and would like her to cross the intersection safely and not have to drive across every day like so many of the Riverside residents feel as if they have to do. Dave Bonnet, who spoke very eloquently, eloquently in favor of an underpass at a meeting here about maybe a month or six weeks ago, couldn't make it tonight, but he did encourage me to mention his name, and he supports this effort. And Dave is a big proponent of an underpass concept as opposed to a pedestrian bridge. But whatever the committee might pursue, I think we would all benefit from the results. I would just add that we're not talking about probably more than about $3 million, and we're not talking about a Frank Gehry-style bridge as designed and we see down at Millennium Park. We're not going to get that for $3 million, but we're going to get something far better than what we see on the Eisenhower Expressway, those 1960 bridges that have kind of, that we see every day as we drive, those of us that drive downtown. It's going to be far better-looking than that. And I'm convinced that with the architects and engineers and the Olmstead Society and all the good people that we have in Riverside that will really look at appropriate options, find funding sources, and build the public support that's necessary to get this done. So, I would just urge you to move forward with this ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brockway. Anyone else?
President, I know that public comment is supposed to be public comment, but given Mr. Foley, trustee Foley's comments, I feel that I need to say something. I just want to respond very quickly that I think it's unfair and not true to imply that the village did not do adequate due diligence in notching the dam. Whether or not you believe, or we, anybody believes, that the Army Corps of Engineers is a reputable organization, I think overall, the Army Corps of Engineers is a very reputable organization, that the facts of their study supported the notching of the dam, not only that, to imply that people in the village were involved if not enough is not true. It's one thing to say people disagree, that's fine, but there were all sorts of volunteers in addition to members of this board and to staff who were involved. There were physicists, there were PhDs in natural resource science, there was the Olmstead Society, there was the State IDNR, there were all sorts of groups in town. And I just want to correct the record and say that there was more than a year of due diligence in this. That was an unusual event. Whether or not we want to go out and say it's global warming and therefore we're going to continue to have unusual and terrific storms, which is what global warming is about, is a separate topic. But I just want to correct any impression that was left, Mike, let me finish, that there was not enough due diligence done. There was a lot of due diligence. And I don't want to get into an argument, I just want to state my point of view.
Jeanne, I apologize for that statement if it upset you, but what I'm looking, well, let me speak now. And what I'm looking now is the aftermath of what has happened, and how we have been left with a culvert that doesn't operate, the grading in the park, which is absolutely wrong, it doesn't drain, the park does not drain. Didn't drain then, and it doesn't drain now. After extensive regrading of the entire park, the grading is wrong. I mean, it's just flat-out wrong, and it doesn't drain to where the culvert is. I didn't do that, you didn't do that, the Army Corps did that. They contracted the grading of that park, did they not?
The village was involved in that as well, there were many people involved.
I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming.
Okay, we're getting, yeah, we're getting off track. Mr. Foley, we're getting off track here. I mean, I will say that the village staff and I are very well aware of the problems down there. As soon as we can get down there and start getting some of things cleaned up, because it's soaked right now, I mean, I agree with both comments that have been made. I think that there's obviously something more that needs to be done down there, but I also think that there was considerable effort and due diligence that went into the decision. So, this is something that I suspect our village is going to be dealing with for years, if not decades, to come, so. But we do have folks here for some other items tonight, so let's try to move things along. Were there any other, anybody else would like to speak publicly, Mr. Fournier?
Nick Fournier at 305 Maplewood. Be much briefer for everyone, but I was invited here today, just kind of want to introduce myself. I also have my real estate brokerage set up at 42 East Avenue, Scout Real Estate Partners. Been in Riverside for two years, it was last year that I set up my own brokerage, really just to kind of pursue what I've been doing over the last 10 or 15 years, completely independent of anyone else, thank God. And one of the things, we love Riverside and our family, I think our story resonates with a lot of people that are moving here these days. We came from Chicago, we left the city after having kids, are just kind of, you know, came out here for the scenery and all the reasons people move out to the suburbs. Ever since coming here, we've always yearned for more in our central business district, in the downtown area. And we've always known there's so much potential, and you go to some of our neighboring communities, and you see Glen Allen, I was in Hinsdale for lunch today, it's all over the place, and we have the same type of demographics and everything behind it that can make this, you know, it doesn't have to be as busy as some of these places, but just as nice and full and enough for us to do. So, your options really are to sit around and, like many people do, we can complain about it, parties and that kind of stuff. I actually chose to get involved and began attending the Economic Development Commission meetings. I was the only non-commissioner that attended the meetings, but that was fine, I was able to get very involved with them, and I've been attending them over the last six months or so. One of the ideas that we threw around toward the end of last year was, you know, just as if you list a residential property, commercial properties do the same thing, where they invite brokers and other real estate professionals to come and tour their properties. Right now, you know, half the properties in town, our largest square footage that's available, has limited exposure, a lot of it's unlisted, it's not on the market. So, through the Economic Development Commission, I am putting on basically a commercial broker's tour. We've reached out to, you know, through connections, we have about 1,000, 1,050 emails, and then I will go out and reach out personally to some of the more local brokers that specialize in working with small businesses and lease these types of properties, and get them out, and, you know, they can tour these properties. On the list, we have Village Center that we're going to tour, Coventry Lane, Arcade Building, we'll tour the old liquor store on Harlem Avenue, and 43 Quincy. So, those are the major ones. The Moda Salon, I contacted them already to see, or the listing agent that's brokering it, to see if we could get that added as well. The tour is May 1st, it's 2:30 in the afternoon. We're going to bring in, I'm hoping that we bring in 20, 30 brokers to come through here. You know, it's twofold, I don't know if the direct result of touring these properties is going to be leases for these spaces in two weeks, or all of a sudden, these big businesses or restaurants want to bombard our doors to come in. But for a lot of people, they don't even know that we exist. They don't, you know, we're right along one of the busiest commuter rail lines in the Chicagoland area, and so many people are unaware of our presence whatsoever. And just getting them, opening their eyes, getting a little bit of press around it, hopefully we can at least, you know, bring some attention and hopefully get some things going here. But that's all I have.
And to make the event even more fun, Brookfield Zoo, our good partner in Brookfield Zoo, has agreed to allow the EDC the use of a Brookfield Zoo bus to transport the participants to the vacant storefronts, as well as provide a tour of our community, so it'll be fun.
And to make it even more fun, we're actually going to host like a small cocktail reception for people afterwards.
You didn't say what we're calling it, the Broker Bash.
It is. That's the eternal term, we haven't not announced that to all the brokers in the Chicagoland area. I think it'll be a little more formal, but that's the gist.
2:30 on the first?
2:30 on the first.
I do want to acknowledge Nick, he's really worked really hard at putting this together. He's been coming to the EDC, and all of the EDC members have been really busy at different projects, and they're all really working really hard, but Nick is a non-member, came to the meetings, and he got suckered into being part of.
He was given an opportunity.
Opportunity.
Trust me, I brought it on completely on my own.
You didn't show up to one.
That's correct. You go to one, and you're stuck, and the rest of it.
But thank you, Nick, for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? That's all I have.
You know, for everybody watching, because this is really going to be an exciting opportunity for people to come in, it's really like an open house for our commercial properties here in Riverside. So, if anyone here, anyone watching at home, if you have contacts in the commercial real estate world, and you think some of them might like to come out and join the tour, have them get in touch with Nick at Scout, and he can put them on the bus.
Absolutely. Join the bus. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick, I appreciate that. Any other public comment? Moving along, no, there is no president's report this evening, Mr. Manchin, do you have anything?
The only thing that I have is I wanted to congratulate and acknowledge the efforts of our Riverside Police Department, who on, the other day, helped rescue a number of teenagers who capsized in the river while canoeing, or last week, this happened on Friday, I believe. So, I just wanted to acknowledge the effort of the police department. Chief Weitzel is here, along with Officer Morello in the back there, but I just wanted to say thank you for the work that they did along with our fire department in making a possible dangerous situation a safe situation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is purely of the consent agenda, are there any items that need to be removed for discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Ms. Collins, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foulton.
Motion carries. There are no reports of departments or commissions this evening. Next up are ordinances and resolutions. And first up is an ordinance approving a special use for operation of a private school at 53 North Gate Road. Were you going to?
Yes, can I?
Let us get it presented first, and then we'll let you all have whatever you want to do. Do you want to give the background?
This agenda item is in regards to a daycare home currently licensed for operation by DCFS for up to eight children, currently operates in a home located at 53 North Gate Road in the R1A Single Family Residence District. Daycare homes with eight children or less are permitted uses in residential zoning district. When more than eight children will be present, the daycare home becomes a large daycare home and a special use permit is required. A petition seeking the special use to operate as a large child daycare home and/or private school in the residence was filed by petitioners Richard and Milagros Andrews with the village of Riverside. Following a public hearing held on March 26 by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the vote, by a 5 to 0 vote, was for the approval of a special use for a private Montessori school, subject to the condition that there be no more than eight students on the property at any one time. Without an increase, children at the property, no parking variation is required. Present with us this evening is Mrs. Andrews, who wishes to address the board and answer any questions regarding the petition. I think they need a motion first, right?
Well, I'm going to ask the village attorneys, so it was reported out of the commission with regard to basically the status quo except making it a school. Since, but this board has the other options also still available to it. Yes, so would it be better to have discussion first and then craft a suitable motion based on the discussion? I think that would be the.
You could.
That's okay.
The other option is just to have a motion and a second on the ordinance as it is, and then that can be withdrawn if things go different ways. Do the trustees have any preference?
I would rather discuss it first.
Okay. And Ms. Andrews, did you want to speak with us, please?
Yes.
Please do.
Well, first of all, good evening, and thank you for giving the opportunity to be part of your community. And, well, last week, I was not present here, I was absent because I was in a conference, but thank you, that, I want to explain to you something, maybe you can open about it, about the use permit that I request. We have the licenses for eight students, according to the DCFS, plus four extended students. This extended group, it is for four students, they're coming after kindergarten. What I can explain to you is my hours operation is from 8 to 5, full day, from 8 to 12:30, three days per week, and two days per week. Not many students are at the same time, that's I want to let you know. Only the time when there can be maybe the 12 as well is the lunchtime, the lunchtime that keeps coming for kindergarten. We go walking, we go bring the kids, just walking, we don't drive, because this is close to ends. We bring to the school, the other kids come, they eating, we are hitting together, after they eat, one group is leaving and the other group stays. And the other thing is some families are just walking, they don't drive so much. And the thing is, I would like that you consider in that petition, because it's really, it's a benefit for the community. And the other thing is new to have a Montessori preschool in this nice environment. We are under the society, a Montessori society in Illinois, and there are many people from Chicago comes to move to the suburb, and the first close suburb is maybe O'Par, Riverside. And some of them, they're studying Montessori in Chicago, and they're looking at schools here in the area. And we are registered in the book, where you can see our city, Riverside, is already recognized under this nice population from Montessori. I just want to let you know a big question mark, and it's good for the kids to have a nice environment, when everybody can come and work like a family, community. And I have some parents that are here, and they can talk about how it's successful to see the beautiful kids smile, say hello, good morning. And we speak Spanish, I'm from Peru, and we teach Spanish bilingual. I just want to let you know that I feel so happy to be in this community since 2008, and I would like to continue to give these successful skills for everybody. There is some parents here like Dan Morello, Mr. Lombardo, and Mrs. Adams, they're here to, they can tell you how nice experience can be together, work like a family. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you consider this petition, because it's very important to have the kindergartens coming to my place, sit together, work together, and everybody like a family. Everybody's welcome to visit our place, and thank you for letting me speak.
Can you stay there just for a second?
Yes.
Do any of the trustees have any questions from Ms. Andrews?
What exactly are you asking us to do? What is your hope that would happen?
Okay, my hope is just to keep my numbers that I already have for the Department of Children and Family Services.
Which is eight?
Eight plus four extended.
Okay.
Okay, this is what I only ask. Everything is under, I think so everybody in the village, we have everything. Everything is under, I think so everybody in the village, we have everything filed there. This is the only thing that I ask. I don't ask for more students. I only want that you respect, like I have eight students plus four extra, it means it's twelve. Like, that's according to my license. I don't want to get more students, because I understand where I'm located is a, is a residential area. If in the future, excuse me, I will have the possibility to get a center, of course, I can apply for more students, it can be for a center. But right now, I just want to see whether I have already the Illinois action for children gave me.
Is that twelve per period? So you have a morning period and you have an afternoon?
No, I mean, we have, like, explain you, we open for eight o'clock to five o'clock. There are kids coming five days per week, some of them come from eight to five, some of them come from eight to eleven thirty, some of them for eleven thirty to three, twelve thirty to five, or some of them come three days per week or two days per week. I mean, not everybody is at the same time.
But, but basically what you're telling me is you, you will not have more than twelve people in the house at a time?
No, 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 no. We don't have, because why? Let me explain you. I'm a licenses under DCFS. If somebody comes to see me, they can cancel my license too, you know? And that's why every, we try to work with the families in that way that we can keep the certain numbers, like we can stick with a license too. Yes.
How many people in addition to yourself work in this school?
I have two assistants. My sister who is Anna Bride, that she's training to a Montessori, and I have another assistant who is Olivia Lopez, who's from Market. She's a bachelor degree in arts and science. And is a Spanish speaker too. American, but she speaks Spanish too, very good. Yes.
Mr. Mars? Was, was the eight plus four extended, was that discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I don't know if it was entirely clear. I mean, there, there was a talk about having up to twelve, but I don't, I'm not sure, and maybe Doug, you can answer too, whether we exactly understood that that was sort of the current operation.
I, I think it was clear that they wanted...
Yeah, we knew they wanted twelve. Right.
And, and, yeah.
That was the petition for twelve.
Yes.
I'm going eight to twelve.
Right. Yeah, we understood that they wanted twelve, but whether the current operation sort of, they were trying to fit that, their current way of operating with the...
So, so if I understand you this evening though, you're not asking for, to have more than eight students at any given time?
No, I would like that you just consider how is my license. I mean, it's eight, full day plus my four that already have. I mean, we have extended, according to the licenses, like twelve, including the four extended. Forty students extended.
What is the, where do the four students come from?
Four, there, we give it for kindergarten. They're coming for kindergarten.
So you're, so you do have twelve students then?
Oh, yes, because I'm going for my license at DCFS.
So you already have twelve students?
With eight, eight students plus four extra coming for kindergarten.
No, I understand, but say at any point during the day, do you have twelve students that you're...
Together?
Yes.
We have no, no, no twelve students together. Because the kindergarten comes at around eleven thirty. I mean, eleven thirty, let me, okay, for example, I have a student who comes Monday to Friday. Maybe she can stay five days for eight to five. Some students comes only for eight to eleven thirty or twelve o'clock. I mean, and then from eleven thirty to five o'clock has come in the student for kindergarten, but some of them are leaving at three o'clock.
Right, right now? Today? There are no more than eight students in the school at a time?
No.
Okay. Correct. There are no more than eight in the school at a time?
But we have eight students already.
Right. That's all you have today?
So she can have twelve enrolled, but no more than eight at a time?
Wait a minute, let me finish my thought here. So today, past, you only had no more than eight. What you're trying to achieve is to increase that number to twelve. Am I correct?
Well, it's no increase, it's only, I would like that you can respect or can respect according to the licenses, my, to get my four extra that I have already licensed for that.
But would it bring you to twelve?
Yeah.
Maybe we can clarify this, but if, if the petitioner understands, we don't care how many students you have enrolled. You could have fifty students enrolled. All we care about and believe is how many are there at any given time? And so are you asking for eight maximum or twelve maximum?
Well, what I asking is if you consider my twelve that already I have.
Okay, so you, you have twelve there and there are times in the day where you have twelve students there? Twelve children?
No, the twelve together. I mean, I mean, I have like eight in the morning or...
You have enrollment for twelve?
Yes, I have enrollment for twelve.
But only eight are there at any one time?
Yeah. That's true. Yes, that's true.
She has a DCFS license for twelve?
Yes. Yes.
Maybe, maybe I can help. And Mr. Mars or Mr. Powell, correct me if I make a mistake. A daycare with eight or fewer is a permitted use in residential.
Correct.
So that, that is kind of the baseline. If they have eight students or fewer present at any given time as a daycare, they can do that as, as a matter of right. Where the, where the special use comes in is either if they want to have a daycare that has more than twelve.
More than eight.
Or more than eight, I'm sorry. More than eight, thank you. Yeah. This would help, yeah.
You were going to help.
Or, 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 or a school of more than eight. So what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended was to allow them to have a Montessori school of eight or fewer. Correct?
I think I heard one part there that, that was different from what the planning commission understood. If they have a school at all with one student, they need a special use.
Correct.
Okay. If it's a daycare, they can have up to eight, no special use. But it's any kind of school with any number, they need a special use.
So the decision we're making tonight is A, the special use for the school, B, the special use for twelve. Correct?
Correct.
Is there a parking thing in here too? There was some parking issue that if you gone, if you went to twelve...
If we're allowing up to twelve, you should, you should add...
Then there's a parking issue.
A parking variation.
Okay, so then that would, that would trigger another issue?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's what we're deciding.
I, I have another question. The highlighted section in the deck that we got from the ordinance, Mike, Mr. Mars, talks about the other requirements that must be met for having a home occupation.
Okay, the home occupation section was really not relevant to this?
So it was highlighted in red though, so I assumed it was. It's not?
Yeah.
That was just part of my initial submittal to get it out, just a little...
Oh, okay. Oh.
Right, but we, we...
I thought you wanted us to read that, it was in red.
Yeah, we clarified during the public hearing that that had no...
It's not a home occupation?
It's not a home occupation. Because it is a specifically defined use that's separate from a home occupation, doesn't fit the definition of a home occupation. And so we, we look at the daycare home definitions and, and standards rather than the home occupation.
So the, the home occupation requirement on employees does not pertain to this?
Correct.
Even though it's in that district?
Yes.
Okay.
If it comes from a rule of law where you have a specific thing that applies to regulating use, the specific takes precedence over a general type regulation that would apply to all, say, home businesses or something. So this particular business use is specifically regulated.
Got it. Okay. And I'd just like to make one other comment. For me, I want you, just for you to understand that, the questions that I have have nothing to do with the value of your school, or the value that a Montessori or a nursery school education brings to anybody. I think we're not talking about the importance of nursery schools, we're not talking about the importance of Montessori. What we're really talking about is, in my opinion, is the appropriateness of having more than eight students in this kind of residential district. Not about whether it's a good school or whether it's been great for your children, I'm sure it has been.
And Trustee Sussman, if I could just clarify that a step further. What we're really concerned about is the impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah. And, and I think one of our, as, as a board, one of our very important responsibilities to, is to make sure that we're thinking about the entire, the, the nature of Riverside, the characteristics of neighborhoods, what kind of characteristics we want to maintain. Again, it's not about whether Montessori schools are good or bad, or whether what you're providing to children is good or bad, because I'm sure it's excellent. That's not what our discussion is about.
That's correct.
I'd like to go back to this clarification between enrollment and what's there, because what I'm reading from the ordinance says that the operator shall make available the number of children or adults being cared for in the facility at any one time. And she's saying at any one time, there will only be eight.
Mm-hmm. And no, that's now. I think that's the confusion. I understood her to say that there are, there, at any one time currently, there are eight students, but you would like to go to your full license, which is twelve.
That's not what she said. She said she wants enrollment for twelve, but not to care for more than eight.
No.
So you never want to have more than eight students on the school ever?
No, because it, because it's a residential area.
Now, I'm still confused. I'm sorry.
She wants to be able to enroll twelve students, but not have eight in, under her care at any one period of time. She staggers them throughout the day.
Right. So is, is that correct? You don't, your, your intention is to, is to never have more than eight students in your home at any one time?
Eight students in my home at one time?
Right.
I know, I understand. No, 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 no. Because, okay, I know your question is if I will have, if I will have twelve students in one time, in my house...
All right, no, my question is, are you ever going to have more than eight students in your home at one time?
Oh, yes.
When? During the crossover? That's where the four extended comes in, right?
When I do the enrollment. I mean, I will have my eight students according to my, my license. Yeah, we're working, okay. Yeah. Okay. Let me see.
Maybe I could, let's see, I think that's another confusion here. DCFS doesn't have anything to do with what you're here for tonight. We're talking about a special use with regard to our zoning.
Okay.
So DCFS, the eight and four is irrelevant.
Okay.
The question that the trustees have is, in a given day, will you ever have more than eight students in your home?
At one time?
At one time.
One time, more eight students, maybe in, no. One group is in the morning, like a three or four, and the other group leave, and then we have another four students too. I mean, it's like eight together and one more, one day, maybe just in lunchtime.
So there is some overlap?
On lunch.
So that's, that's your, that's your decision here? You know, one, are you going to allow for it to be a school? And two, are you going to allow there to be more than eight students in the home at any given time?
Let's talk about the school issue for a second. When I was reading a lot of the, the issues brought up by North Gate residents, and had nothing to do with the school, but it had to do with, there's, there's a lot of concern on that street about traffic. And obviously, if you're going to run a school, you are going to be concerned with both the traffic that comes through, as well as the, as I think the traffic that you will bring into the area, because those eight students or twelve students have to get there somehow. And I think this whole thing started because you or your husband went to get a, went to the police department to get a school sign?
No, that's what I did, my idea. Like, I can call, I can say innocent idea to help to the neighborhood, that because in my area, there's families, they have many kids, and we can see through that they run and like, I mean, go and back, and sometimes the cars go so fast. And I, I said, why I cannot stop that one? And it was my idea to come here to save for the sign.
Because, because you're a school?
No, it was not because my school. I tried to help the community too. Well, has, maybe for my school too, but at the same time to help the community, the neighbor.
If I may try and clarify this a little bit. Way back in late fall, Chief Weitzel came in with, with the request. On it, there was some letterhead that indicated the Montessori school. This Milagros, Miss Andrews, Milagros. This goes back to 2009, when she originally moved into the property and, and went in and had the, wanted to go into the school, and we explained to her at that time, can't operate as a school without a special use permit. She was allowed to then continue as a daycare with the eight students, and that how she operated up until late last fall, early winter, when she approached the village with the concern over the signage to slow down the traffic. At that time, it was noted to me that there was indications with letterhead and other issues that she wanted to proceed further with her business and advance her business as a Montessori school. We met several times, and then they thought it was in their best interest to come in for the special use, for the purpose of, to move forward as a school, so they could advertise as a school, and not be in conflict with the village ordinance for the daycare. Then the commissions evolved over the late winter and the first part of the year, and then we got to this point, where it started out as a sign request, we noticed the conflict with the ordinance, they came forward to request the school, actually, they came forward requesting either the daycare or the school. Through several conversations, it was determined it was in their best interest to go for the special use as a school, if that's how they wish to pursue, versus the daycare. And as, what wasn't brought out at the original meeting, as Millie said, she was out of town on business, her husband was there. Millie's obviously the more, the more day-to-day operator of the school, Richard does, Richard does. So what didn't really come out was the fact, and is, when Millie and I talked the other day, was that she may start out the morning with eight students, somewhere around eleven thirty, three or four of them will pass on to their next home, wherever. And then Millie and her staff will walk over to Ames, and then physically walk these two and a half to five-year-olds back to the house. So I think that's what the total...
Yes.
You're looking for. So you're looking at twelve students in there, perhaps going through there during the day, but basically with eight at any one time?
Yes.
Well, what I'm getting at with the schools, if we, if we allow you a special use for a school, I would, I would think that part of that, it would be, school signs have to be put up on that block, so people know that they're driving, that they know that there's a school here. And this is, this may be petty, but if school signs are being put up for a privately-run school, then those signs will have to be paid for by the school. That's possible, correct?
Well, as part of the, the reviews that the board directed staff to, to complete in regards to that whole park, park area speed analysis, one of the things that was suggested is extension of the school zones. So what we did is through our GIS, we did create map, a map that highlights a thousand-foot radius from each of our schools. And North Gate is within that, that circle of Ames School, so the school zone enforcement would apply in that area there.
But additional signs would have to be put up?
We would have to put additional signs.
Right. And my point is, is if we're putting up additional signs for the benefit of a private school and a private business that, that is making a profit, that those, those signs that go up should be paid for by that school. It shouldn't be paid for by the taxpayers of the Village of Riverside. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money, we're talking about $250 to sign. So I'm just saying that would...
Okay, I, I still have a clarification question, Michael. The petition is, there are only going to be eight kids being taught at a time, but there's a chance that twelve children will have lunch. Is that right, Mike? I thought there was, she was saying that there could be an overlap?
No. No. What, what there's, what, what I think is being said is that, that twelve kids will be enrolled, but at any given time, there will not be more than eight. There is a possibility that there may be some crosslap for maybe one or two hours, but no teaching, it's more of a, a kind of switch-off time period.
With the morning children are on their way home, and then they're picking up the
With the morning children around, they're way home, and then they're picking up the ones that need to be bringing them in.
So the, so the special use permit, Michael, is, Jill, excuse me.
Sorry.
Can you? Yeah, well, I know, can you? Can you get the picture down there, please? The special use permit is, is because there are twelve different names on the roster, or because there might be some overlap? I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not sure if there's only gonna be eight there at any one time, whether they would need a special use.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, but, but there would be...
But I don't know if that was clear.
Well, it sounds like there may be eight there for a little bit of overlap.
You need the special use because they want to be identified as a school.
A school. Right, well, no, I mean, for the daycare home.
But, yeah, but you could have...
Because no matter what, it's still a daycare home.
Right, but you could have the special use because it's gonna be called a school, and still not, and, but it's still limited to, it sounds like she only wants eight there for a very short period of time, and not for instructional purposes.
You need more than eight.
More than eight, excuse me. And then, I guess my question is, do you need, do you, do we need to increase it from, I mean, I, we still have to go... I understand the special use because it's a school, but what about the number of children she's talking about?
Right. So I think we should look at what the ordinance says, in terms of defining a daycare home.
At any one time.
I don't think it does, though.
The planning commission understood it to be eight at, at a time.
Right.
I think that's what the ordinance said.
Yeah, that's what I thought it said.
And, and I think from a zoning perspective, that whether they're being educated or not is irrelevant, it's the presence that has the greater impact, that has the impact on the surrounding neighborhood, which is what the zoning is geared.
So we're really talking about a couple of hours of day, a day where possibly there are twelve students there, at the very most?
Because they're coming and going.
Because they're coming and going.
Right.
There's some overlap. We're not talking about twelve kids being there from eight to five every day.
Right, so, so one option might be to, you know, grant the special use for the school, and grant the special use for the large daycare home, but put a condition on it that the only period of time that there can be in excess of eight children there at any one time would be during the lunch hour, or something of that nature.
During the transition period.
During transition periods, I think would be better to say it, yeah.
And then we can pack that clock, correct?
Because the traffic, we're talking about four more students, so at the very most, we're talking about eight cars a day.
Yeah, they're three parents.
Yeah, just, you have to come up here and talk, you can, certainly, but...
Please, did you want to?
Yeah, do you want to? Yeah, you just have to introduce yourself, give your name, and...
My name's Shannon Adams, and I'm a Riverside resident, I'm Addison. My only comment, yes, it's a Montessori school, it's wonderful, we all love it, that's why the parents showed up. But more specifically about traffic, I know I've almost crashed into one or two people on bikes, because a lot of us are commuting via bicycle with our children. I have two other children that live behind me, and we're quite commonly carpooling as well. So I think those few things, I think everyone should keep in mind as well, most of us parents are Riverside parents, and a lot of us are walking, a lot of us are riding our bikes, and a lot of us are carpooling, so I think that's important to note as well. That's it.
Yes, sir, please.
Tom Lombardo, 299 Youthdale Road. My five-year-old son goes to Ms. Millie's school, and to your point, it is a wonderful school. I had two years of Spanish in college, and my little five-year-old can speak more Spanish than I can. And I think that's great. I moved to Riverside out of the city, one of the big things that I looked for was the schools here. My son goes to, to this school in the mornings, a couple days a week, and then he goes to building blocks. We specifically enrolled him into her school to get slightly different kind of teaching, which has been great for him. I'm able to handle the handoffs sometimes, there aren't a lot of cars on that block. But to, to her point, there is a lot of transition, because you've got some kids that come there in the morning, and then they go to building blocks. You also have other kids who come from Ames in the afternoon, and so I think that's where it's a little bit tricky in the part of, of the count. One thing I think that's important, too, is it's down the street from Ames, and my son is five, and he's getting ready to enroll in kindergarten. And as interesting, as I sat through the, the parent orientation at Ames, the number two questions, if you can imagine, that came out of parents in that, at that meeting were, number one, what kind of special language programs does Ames and the, and the 96th School District offer to, to residents? Which I thought was interesting, because you have a Montessori school down the street that speaks, that teaches Spanish. And the second question was, because Ames is, is only a two-and-a-half hour a day, there was a lot of questions from parents, well, what do I do with my, with my children beyond those, those times? And so I think you need to, I understand the ordinance and the zoning, but I think you need to take into consideration, there's, there's a great need for schools like this in the community, and then to have a Montessori school, I think in Riverside is great. I think there is a need for being able to have, drop in an area where you can, and they, they, they come walk your, your child to Ames. So my son will probably go to Ames, and then he'll, he'll get walked over to Ms. Millie's in, in the afternoon. So I urge you all to look at the zoning and keep, keep her there, because she's a wonderful teacher, and it's a great school for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morello. Can we have some quiet, please?
I think I hold kind of...
Do we have quiet, please?
I think I hold kind of a unique status compared to the other parents, in, in that fact that I live two houses away, and I'm also a parent who, of a student that goes there. I'm one of the ones that, that she talks about the extended care, which are the extended kindergarten. So my daughter Isabel goes to Ames, and it's a half-day only in District 96. That would require me to wake up every day at 11, because I work midnights. I would wake up at 11, 10, stumble over to Ames, grab her, take her somewhere else, come back home, try to sleep again. So for a working parent, who might be in the city, who has a child that goes to Ames, they would have to rely on other parents, or their own parents, nannies to come pick up kids from Ames. So Ms. Millie offers a unique service, in that she goes to Ames and gets kids, and brings, walks them back to her house. I wish all the schools had something like that, but they don't. Kids from Central actually can walk across the street to that church that has that, but again, Hollywood, or, or Ames, or Blythe, they're on their own. As far as the traffic, you talked about, trustee Valerian, I've only gone to Millie, this is my, like, I'm sorry, this year, so I've been watching for four years, along with a couple other people on my block. And I know that part of your decision-making at times is conducting a traffic study. I actually did that this morning, because I really wanted, I saw the complaints that were written about the traffic, how bad the traffic's gonna be if she raises it by four more children. Well, first of all, three of those children are being walked from Ames, so there's no car involved. Those parents drop off those kids at Ames in their own vehicle, and then they're walked back to the school, no impact at all on the, the block as far as vehicle traffic. So I did this traffic study today, and I watched, so at eight o'clock in the morning, three cars showed up. Two used her driveway, one parked in the street. That man walked his child across the street. Drop-off time was approximately a minute and 15 seconds. Those cars were gone. Ten minutes went by, another two cars pulled up. What's interesting is, I saw the complaints, some of them came from the east side, towards west over a stop sign. A total of five cars came from the east, dropped off their children, and left going westbound, which does not cross any of those people's houses, so they only had to see five cars drive past their house, going to Ms. Millie's. In the afternoon, everyone staggered, some people pick up their kids at three, some come at four, some come at five. So there's no impact there, in my opinion. So, trying to think of anything else. So anyway, I, I just think that allowing her four more children at any given point, twelve, isn't unreasonable. She's been a great neighbor, she's been there, like she said, six years, conducted the preschool for five. I'm sure the police department will tell you, zero complaints. She's earned her respect of the block, I believe, and I think she's earned the opportunity to expand her business by four children. So, thank you.
And, and two of those cars driving by was me, because I drove by a few times today trying to...
And a scooter will be out later, right?
Actually, I was one of the drop-offs. I drove by your house to see what, what was going, you know, to see your house, and I was kind of surprised that I didn't even, I couldn't even tell if you had kids. You have like a dolphin on your, on your garage, right?
If I could say one more thing, I'm sorry. If you were to ask a bunch of people on my block where the preschool is at, I'm telling you, no one would know.
I, I had a hard time finding it.
Guys I work with, I say, I'm going to the board meeting, I talk about the preschool on my block, they're like, what preschool? I mean, it really is zero impact on our block. I'm, I'm not sure why those people are complaining, I think they think that it's coming, honestly. I think they actually think that the preschool's coming, and they're worried about it coming. It's been there for five years. No one's complaining.
I have one question about this, about what, there's a petition signed by some of the neighbors against approving this.
Right.
And in that petition, the wording says, multiple children from the same family attending this school or daycare is counted as one.
I saw that too, and I'm not sure what that means, I thought maybe they can clear that up, is that something that's...
Is that correct?
According to DCFS, at the upstart of the, of the daycare center back in '09, that was an issue was raised about the number of children onsite. We contacted DCFS, the same amount of children from one family is one.
Okay, so are you counting the same number, if a family has three children, is that counted as one?
Yeah.
Yes?
DCFS says that's not the rule now.
Well, that's certainly not the rule of Riverside. It's irrelevant to the park zoning. Paternity's correct?
Yes.
I mean, this is eight people.
Eight people, eight human beings.
So what you're telling me, eight people, it's not really eleven, because three of them are from one fam, right? It is really eight individual people? Okay.
Right. Some of the confusion comes from the differences between the DCFS definitions and the village definitions. Now, DCFS has two categories of daycare homes, they have one for eight students, but she has that with this little add-on that allows you four additional kids who are school-age. Now, I'm not sure that's a proper designation for her, because Commissioner Mateo had talked to DCFS, and they told her that school age means first grade and up, not kindergarten. So she may have to bump her DCFS regulate, license up to what's called a group daycare home, which allows up to twelve kids. Okay? And then Riverside has what's called small daycare homes, which says eight or fewer children. And I think that because the intent is eight or fewer children, it wouldn't matter under that whether they were, as long as there's only eight there at any one time, it would still be a small daycare home. But daycare home, large, under Riverside's code, is eight children, and, more than eight children, and that's what requires a special use. So those don't exactly match up, but if she's ever gonna have more than eight children there at any one time, she would need the large daycare home special use in Riverside.
And just to add to that, I, I mean, I, it seems to me, some attempt at creating a hybrid here would be a mistake. You know, to try to say, yes, you can have eight, but then there's two hours when you can have twelve, I think, I think that would be impossible to police in any way. And my suggestion would be that we, that you consider either fewer than eight, eight or lower, or above. But I would not try to create a...
So if we, if we took this in two bites, the first bite would be the school bite, and the second bite would be the kid bite.
The numbers, right.
So I would make a motion that we allow Millie to call herself a Montessori school, on the pretext that she properly signs the, the block, at least posts, at least two signs on the block that says there's, there's a school, because there is a school now, and that those signs be paid for by the Montessori school.
Before you make that motion, is, I, I would not be comfortable in splitting it, because the number of students is all that matters to me. I don't care whether they call it a school or a daycare.
But I think that's what we have to do, though, right?
Split it? No, we don't have, we could vote, I mean, the ones dependent on the other, the only way I would support a special use for a school is if it's limited. So I'm not gonna vote in favor of a motion to approve a special use for a school unless it has a condition that leaves the nominee.
Okay, then I would, I will add to that motion, and allow the maximum students on the campus at any given time not to exceed twelve.
Is there a second?
Also, I have a question.
Motion by Mr. Valerian, second by Ms. Hamilton. Let, let me just comment one thing with, with regard to the paying of, for the signs, because, you know, what, what Manager Scolero was just reporting on is, as you recall, the board asked them to go back and look at expanding the distance and proper placements of the existing school signs, in lieu of possibly, in lieu of doing the park zone speed limits, right? So what he was describing would be that the sign that we're talking about would actually be tied to Ames, not to...
I understand, I understand.
But, 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 so I think that raises an issue, because you're putting the onus as if it's not applying to Ames, you're saying as if it applies to the private entity.
But I, what I'm saying is, we wouldn't put that sign there if it wasn't for the private entity.
But I'm, but that's my point, is that you probably would, if you are going to fulfill what you talked about at the last meeting, of making sure that all of our existing school signs are in place and given the, the proper thousand-foot radius.
We were talking about expanding the zone to carry the, cover the wall.
Are you also gonna make it retroactive, so the school signs near First Presbyterian now are gonna go back and charge First Presbyterian for those school signs?
It's a problem.
If it's within the Ames area, and it truly is not just for the school, I wouldn't see why we'd have to pay for it.
All right. Okay, then I, then I'll take off this paying of the sign.
And I have another question. I guess I'm not certain I agree, I understand what you're saying, Ben, about how difficult it can be, about this issue of this two, two-hour waiver, but I would say that all laws are subject to enforcement, or subject to whoever the law is for, in honor system. We have laws that say you can't have music outside after a certain hour, or you can't be, you can't do certain things, we have vagrancy laws. And a lot of this is just subject to people following the law. So if we were to pass an ordinance, I'm just, if we were to pass an ordinance that says that there can be no, there can be between eight and/or nine and twelve students on the property only between the hours of 11, I'm just saying hypothetically, that's the honor system, just like any other regulation or ordinance is an honor system. So I have no problem with that, I, I'm not saying, I, I don't know how I feel about that, but I, I'm not certain I agree with your...
Well, let me ask the attorneys, I mean, my, I mean, under normal statutory construction, you take it as word. I mean, does, does, do the, does the ordinance is written, would that allow for this kind of thing where we would say, you can, you know, fewer than eight, except between the hours of twelve and two, and you can have up to twelve? Can we even do that?
There's a section with conditions, so we would just add that as a condition.
Yeah, because it gives you the flexibility, yes, above eight, but these are the conditions under these circumstances.
And if it's ever found that she's in violation of that, then the board then has the ability to revoke the special use.
So would you like to make an amendment?
I'd like to just think about it for one second longer, please.
Can I, can I go back to your Presbyterian church analogy? Because you could do Presbyterian church, you could do building blocks, you could do any of them, but this Montessori school is a for-profit. All the other ones are non-for-profit, and I think that's a big difference. I mean, it's $500. It's not a lot, it's not a lot of money, but I...
It's $500, it's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money, but I still think it's, it's, it's important that a for-profit business shouldn't, shouldn't take taxpayers' money. That's, that's, that's the point, whether it's $500, whether it's $5,000, it's $500.
I don't agree with that.
I have several comments I want to make. First of all, I'd like to suggest that the sign issue is a separate issue, that we should take up separately, whether they pay for it or not, I think, you know, to me, that's a separate issue, but if you want to tackle that now, that's fine. But I'm gonna get, I want to discuss the motion on the table.
What is the motion?
The motion on the table is a special use for a school with up to twelve students.
Right.
Our Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to limit it to eight students. There was a motion to allow twelve, that motion was denied four to one. Our Planning Commission heard residents who aren't here tonight, because they took the Planning Commission's recommendation, I, I assume, I don't know why they're not, but there was testimony from neighbors saying, we're negatively impacted by this, right now, with eight students. Now, you know, that can be debated, and maybe they are, maybe they aren't. Fact of the matter, eight students are allowed as a daycare, and if we, well, if they want to call it a school, I have no problems with that. But eight students in a residential home, in my view, is a lot. I think our existing code is quite liberal in this sense, allowing eight students as a quote-unquote "home occupation" or, or daycare. When you get beyond that, and this, I've talked to people who have students that have gone to this school, and they say nothing but wonderful things about this facility, but to me, this sounds like a facility that needs to rent space at a local church, like building blocks does, like the Presbyterian church does, like, you know, most of these types of facilities, when they get beyond that magic number of eight, that's what they do. But anyway, that's getting to the merits of why I think the Planning Commission made the recommendation they made. Bottom line is, you have a unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I feel strongly that, you know, their recommendation should be honored, because it is, it was a unanimous decision. a unanimous decision, a recommendation. And I have heard nothing tonight that would make me feel like, okay, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't understand this, or they got something wrong. I mean, everything I've heard tonight doesn't change anything that I heard a week ago at the Planning and Zoning public hearing.
I talked to one of the Planning and Zoning members, and his point to me was, there's eight in the morning, and there's eight in the afternoon, so there's a carryover there, so there's 16 in the home.
Right.
That's not what we're hearing tonight. We're hearing that there is no more than 12, ever eight, ever in that home. So, so there's no carryover where there's 16. And then, then his point was, well, if you allow 12, and then you have 12, that's 24 during the afternoon, or during this carryover time. And I don't think that is what is being represented here tonight. And that is what he understood.
That's not what I understood at all.
And then, then this, this, this petition for, from these people saying they don't like it, it states very clearly that any, if you have, if I send three students there, it's considered one. And you know what? If I live next door to this, and, and I, if you have 10 families that send three, three students, that's, or eight families that send three students, you know, according to DCFS, that's fine, but in reality, that's 24. So I don't think that's factual. So I think the facts now say eight is what we will have at any given time with a maximum of 12, not 16, not 24.
No, the facts are that they would have a maximum of 12 at any given time.
Right. But, but the way, the way, the way this commissioner explained it to me is, eight in the morning, eight in the afternoon, you have the carryover, you have 16. You have 12 in the morning, 12 in the afternoon, you have a carryover, it's 24.
Do, do we need to send this back to them?
I, I firmly believe that we need to follow what our commissions decide unless, I agree with Doc, unless there's something that is materially wrong, that I think that they misunderstood something. I think that the person that you're talking to is talking about that there could be 16 throughout the day, eight in the morning, eight in the afternoon, which is the case.
Yeah.
And so I would go along with the planning commission. If they want to go with a larger amount, I would say it needs to go back to the planning commission to be heard, where residents have a chance to appear, as they had at this planning commission. Obviously, some people had issues with it, and it was voted unanimously to go, stay with the eight, so I would approve only with the planning commission.
I read the entire transcript, and there was nothing in there that led me to believe that commissioners thought that it was 16 total.
Well, let's be clear.
You can say I had nothing to do with my time, but I did.
I was there, and I do think that, that they understood that. Are they, that was the potential, but it's the potential now. I mean, even with the motion on the table, you could have 24 students.
No, she, she specifically is telling me that there will never be anyone more than 12 people.
No, but your motion was 12 maximum at any given time.
Correct.
So they could have 36, 26 during that.
No, I can't.
12 for two hours, 12 for two hours.
No, I can't, I can't.
Please allow her to clarify herself.
Sorry. I can, I'm sorry to not be, to support your, your answer, but I can, the way that you're thinking is not the way that we, we work. And plus, I'm working with kids at two years and a half to five years old. I'm not working with, with kids like 11, 13, elementary, high school. And I don't have 36 students in my house, like you are, you are trying to say, neither 24 students in my house, because first of all, neighbors, they can complain, because I cannot have that 24 or 36, like my house, like a gate where the kids cannot scream, or jump, or whatever. What I ask, only ask is, according to what I explain, no, I mean, everybody come at a certain time, and everybody leave at a certain time. We don't have everybody together. And the ask only is that.
We understand that, but you could have someone come for two hours. You, you're open from eight until five, so theoretically, you could have four different people come for two hours.
No, I don't have program two hours. I'm, I'm flexible with the parent. The parent knows how I work. I have three days, five days, two days, and they come from eight to 12:30, or eight to 11:30, and then 11:30 to 3 o'clock, or like that.
But I think what, what he's saying is, if you have morning people and afternoon people, you could have 16 different people, because eight could be in the morning, and eight could be in the afternoon.
Well, 16 people, different people, it could be.
Yes.
It could be.
But only eight at one time.
Yeah, eight at one time, like that.
We all, we all understand.
Yeah, like that. But no, not like 32, like that.
Are there other comments from the trustees on, on this particular motion?
Well, I misunderstood Joe's comment about the 12. What I thought he was saying, and what I would support, is eight under her care at any one time, with the possibility that because there's like ships passing in the night, the four extended that she had might be, some might be going out the door, and some might be coming in the door. That's what I understood, not 12 under instruction at one time. So, and that's what I support is...
But your motion is 12 under instruction, potentially.
I'll, you figure out how to say that, and I'll second it.
Well, I, I keep going back to what I thought I heard, and I'll say it again, is that she has 12 children enrolled, but no more than eight under instruction at any one time.
Yes.
Because they're coming and going, and I support that.
Okay.
Can you define "under instruction"?
Yes, like if your child is enrolled from 8:30 to 11:30, they're under instruction from 8:30 to 11:30, and then they're out the door.
In the building, in the house.
Yeah.
On the premises. So, I would love you to try to, to put that in words, and I'll, I'll second it. Or if you tell me how to put it in words, and you can second it.
But...
And we can remove the sign portion of it.
But, but, if I may, if, from what Trustee Hamilton's saying, is the recommendation of the planning commission would cover that. Because the recommendation of the planning commission does not limit how many people they have enrolled. All it says is eight under instruction at any given time.
But we're talking about more than eight on the premises for an overlap.
It says eight on the property.
Yeah, so that is different. Did the planning commission discuss the possibility of this...
Of what happens when they're coming and going?
Yeah.
That was not brought up to me, because Ms. Millie wasn't there that evening. So that was, that is somewhat new information that wasn't available that evening regarding... When we discussed this the other day, this came up, that there is the pickup at Ames, and they're brought over in the afternoon after the children in the morning leave.
So, so the motion should be that the, A, it becomes that we okay the Montessori school. Secondly, only eight children can be instruction at every given time with no more than 12 on the premises.
During transition.
During transitional periods.
During an hour period, or an hour and a half period.
During the transitional period.
So, the Montessori school is fine, no more than eight under instruction at any given time, no more than 12 during transitional periods. I don't think that's what...
I, I would like to stipulate the hours of that. Otherwise, you, one could argue that you could have transitions in your, I'm sorry.
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, she's got set hours, right? So the transition could be 11:30 and 12:30.
I, I think, I mean, I think what's causing confusion here is basically what's being presented to the board tonight is not what was presented to the trust, was not presented to the planning and zoning. So I think that we should send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Let them, because they should be doing what we're trying to do now, hash out these details. And I don't like the idea, to Mr. Pollak's point, of asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to conduct a hearing on something that they didn't need to conduct a hearing on, apparently, because they were, they were talking about something other than what we're being asked to decide upon. So I think that the Planning and Zoning Commission has a right to, to hear what is actually being requested.
And I have a question. Do we have, do we incur the same cost? Do we have to send out the same notification, and...
No, when, when something's remanded from this board, then it's just a continuation of the previous.
Then, then I would support that.
The only other thing I was going to say, if we wanted to, we could go ahead and approve what we are, what the planning commission approved, and then if they wanted to take it back to the planning commission to get this additional transitional period, they could, and that would be up to that one.
That's an excellent idea.
So that, so this could be settled tonight, if they want it settled tonight, or if they want the additional, then they can go back for it.
Can we do that without a new public?
Well, what you'd do is, you would, you would remand it. You would just leave, if you leave it open, then she needs to reapply, and you start over. But what you would do is, you would, you would approve the portion that the planning commission approved and remand it for further consideration based on what was raised. And then if they withdraw it, that's fine. If they say they want to leave it the way it is, they can. But otherwise, they could proceed with the planning commission and not incur additional costs. That's what I would recommend, is make the remand on that.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion, and...
He has to withdraw his motion.
Does that make sense?
We have a motion on the table.
I, I, I'm, I'm missing what you're saying. I'm, I'm lost again.
Okay, Joe, what, what I was saying is, that if you, if the, the suggestion was, was made that, well, one, the suggestion was made that if they, if it's remanded without any decision, then they wouldn't have to incur additional costs. But the suggestion was made, could we approve the part that was already approved by the planning commission, meaning that it's a school that could have up to eight students on the property at any one time, and remand the portion, or for the, the, the transition periods for up to four more at any given time during perhaps a limited, limited period that they would have to discuss it. And then if that was so, whether they would, you know, how that would affect it. And I think if you want to do that, you could approve it, what the planning commission approved, and remand the transitional period for further hearing, okay? And that if you do that, then it's, someone can follow it. It's, the proceeding isn't ended here tonight. And that if they were happy, they, with what they got, didn't want to go through that, they could withdraw it, and that would be fine. But, but if they didn't and went forward, it would still be part of the same process, and they wouldn't have to pay and go through the whole application process anew.
So, Ms. Andrews, do you, do you follow what we're saying here? I know we're all over the map. What is, first, let me ask, does that, does that sound like...
I'm good with that.
What you guys...
So Joe would have to withdraw his motion, and a new motion would have to be made, right?
Or do a friendly amendment.
Or a friendly amendment.
Yeah, or you could just do a new motion, and we can all agree that was withdrawn. Since we're a small group, we know what's, we know what we're getting at.
I have to withdraw it, though. You can't tell me to withdraw the motion.
I would draw my motion.
I wouldn't try.
Okay, Mr. Pollak, you have a...
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance as submitted, with a couple of clarifications, which I, I think should not, and should not create any more discussion. One is that it be clear in the conditions that this is a, still a residential use, and that the special use only applies as long as this is being used as a residence. I think that's implied, but I just want to be overt about that and make that clear. And there was a condition in there stating that if it ceased for 60 days, the special use would expire. And I believe they, you shut down in the summer, don't you?
Resident indication.
Have you ever closed for 60 days at a time in the summer?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, let me explain you. We don't, we open on September to May, and then we close the three months.
So I would say, clarify that condition to exclude June through August. That they can be closed June through August and not lose their special use.
Got it.
And that's my recommendation with, to approve the ordinance with those clarifications to the conditions, and to remand to the Planning and Zoning Commission clarification on the condition regarding eight students maximum at a time, and how that apply, how they recommend that apply to that transitional period in the middle of the day.
There is a motion by Mr. Pollak, second by Mr. Valerie. So, we're all, we're all clear on what we're doing here?
Want to repeat the motion?
So...
Yeah, yeah, you want to repeat the motion?
Yes.
So there's a motion on the, on the ordinance.
Yeah, no, actually...
Yeah, but with, with the remand, and with the clarification, and the remand. The remand's an important part.
They're going to approve this school, up to eight students, with the opportunity to go back to the planning commission, in the heat of early November, to make your presentation about how you pick up the children from school, and how some leave.
They can carry any additional costs.
No, no additional fee.
No, it's okay, no problem.
That works.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Hamilton, aye.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie, aye.
Trustee Allen, aye.
Trustee Pollak, aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up is an ordinance. Can we have some quiet, please, so we can continue the meeting? Next up is an ordinance amending the budget, budget amendment number one for fiscal year beginning January 2013. Ms. Francis.
We finished the fiscal year, and on December 31st, we're actually working on finalizing the comprehensive annual financial report for the village. However, a budget amendment is required for certain items that the board had instructed staff to complete. One item of note is the IMRF catch-up payment, which was done in December, which you'll notice in the general fund, that is the bulk of those particular amendments and modifications. Additionally, there was a transfer into the capital projects fund for $550,000 to fund 2014, rather, capital improvements that don't have a funding source under the capital projects fund. And then there were some other minor items that are listed within Exhibit A amendment of the amendment number one. With regard to the debt service fund, those particular unbudgeted expenditures are with regard to those refundings that we did in 2013. Also, there is the E911 fund. The E911 board approved certain unbudgeted expenditures within 2013, and so therefore, those are what, those amendments are reflected. The bulk of them were for the spillman upgrade, with in concert of doing certain upgrades for the communication center and the spillman that would basically marry the fire systems with the spillman, which in the past, the two systems, they had used, I believe it was Firehouse and Spillman separately. And finally, there was an item, if you noticed at each of your places, there was a highlighted ordinance for the motor fuel tax one, and additionally, the exhibit. There was one small modification, but it is of material to myself, for $146 for the motor fuel tax fund, and those are for banking fees. So we do need to note that as part of the budget amendment. And I spoke with Attorney Morris, and he said that would be fine, as long as we noted it during the minutes, and it was approved by the board. You have any questions?
Some questions.
I move to accept the budget amendment.
As presented by Director Jessica.
Motion by Ms. Sussman.
By the treasurer of the second.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
I just wanted to let Trustee Pollak return to his seat, so...
I apologize.
No worries.
Thought there was an emergency, but everything's okay.
Trustee Sussman?
Yes.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Valerie?
Aye.
Trustee Cal?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Motion carries.
Next, next up, thank you, Ms. Francis. Next up are considerations, and this is a discussion of the First Avenue, First Avenue, Ridgewood Road, the potential of a pedestrian bridge or an underpass, and the formation, potential formation of an ad hoc committee to consider the feasibility of either such an underpass or, or overpass. Just to kind of start off the conversation, I just wanted to make a suggestion that, that one way we could handle this, if the trustees are so inclined, is to, is to refer this to the Safe Environment Commission, which, who really are, that's the commission that is specifically formed for exactly this kind of, of study. So if you're interested in pursuing this, I would throw that out as a potential option, in lieu of creating a separate, a separate committee. So, discussion is yours. Sure, Mr. Wright?
Under the Illinois Environmental Bearers Act, or the American with Disability Act, the federal act, I believe a ramp one to 12 would be required. That is a long ramp. You would need at least 14 foot clear to the underside of that bridge, at least 14 foot. That would make that ramp, you would have to almost go down to 21st Street to get going on that ramp. And the same would be true for a tunnel. And the same would be true for a tunnel. You literally have that tunnel running from almost, I'm guessing, pretty near the river, and I don't know where it would come up on the other side. I just don't see how this can be accomplished, to be frank with you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Trustees?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Pete, 263 Scottswood. First of all, a 1 to 12 ramp, 14 feet multiplication, so it's going right, is somewhere around 175 feet, which is roughly the width of two full-size Riverside lots, say over 100 feet. It's not a block long. Well, it's 12 times 14.
Good gentleman. Gentlemen.
Gentlemen. Gentlemen. Because you can't go up 14, 15.
One at a time. Sir?
And, well, you might have to add a few more feet because 14 foot's the clearance and you have the top surface of the thing, so it might be 12 times 15 or something. So it's 180 feet, you know, ramp. But the point I wanted to make this evening is that one of the issues about the crossing of First Avenue for the Riverside students to get to RB is the use of, how many students are pedestrians? It's, well, if you look at a map, you say the normal reasonable walking distance to school is one mile. Laid out on a chart here, the green area, and only the green area, is within one mile of RB. You can see a vast area of Riverside extends well beyond that green area. So, one of the other issues is that parents tend to drive their children to RB, resulting in a traffic congestion at First Avenue, traffic congestion at RB, and also more significantly, traffic congestion at what I call the hub of Riverside, the Long Common, Burlington, Forest Avenue intersection. And at, in the mornings, which is the peak of rush hour for people going to work, people going to school, the parents driving the kids to school, then reversing the journey coming back, that, plus the gates are down about 30% of the time at that, I think we're point, peak of a rush hour, that some, there can be some ways to alleviate these traffic jams if we get the students to become more self-propelled. And on this map, laid in some pink areas, in the first division, that would also be in the one mile walking distance to school. And the, how that would result, there is a pedestrian tunnel under the railroad tracks just east of a river. It's structurally independent of the bridge over the river, but it's there. It's been, it's half-filled up with gravel and silt and so on, but could easily be made, brought up to date. The tunnel is finishing, finished concrete, 10 feet wide, about eight feet high. It might be a little bit more, a little bit less. You'd have to dig down, see if there's any pavement under, under all the debris. People've camped out in there, beer cans and stuff, kids have party perhaps. But the other thing is that this hub of Long Common and Burlington and Forest, along with railroad tracks, is not a safe place for kids to ride a bicycle to school. They have to cross seven lanes of traffic if they're coming from the south, south of the tracks. You've got two lanes at Burlington, four lanes at Long Common, plus another lane for the right-hand turn from going south in Long Common on the forest. They have to cross seven lanes of traffic. And it's crowded with cars at the time they're doing it. If this tunnel were opened up, people in the south of railroad tracks would have a safe way to either walk or ride to school by using this tunnel under tracks near the river. And also, some thought should be given to the students that live up in the northern part of Riverside. And I know there's some discussions underway about putting a bike path along First Avenue, which certainly could be utilized for a purpose. But the village, I think, would be very much improved because, first of all, kids going to school in a self-propelled fashion is much healthier than being driven. Second, their parents who drive them to school won't have another half hour or 45 minutes of free time that they don't have now. And, and third, and perhaps most important for all of residents of Riverside, is a lot of these traffic jams will be reduced. You don't have the parents driving to school, then turning around and driving back right at the height of rush hour. So, I thought relative to this bridge over First Avenue, or a tunnel under First Avenue, that has the possibility, or the possibility is there, but the demand for the use of it will be much enhanced by some of these changes that could be made. And I think that should be considered as part of the package. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sussman?
If you're interested, I've got the map here, I've got pictures of the tunnel and so on.
Doesn't that tunnel feed into people's backyards?
Are you?
Doesn't that tunnel feed into people's backyards? I've been in that.
No, it doesn't. It feeds into railroad property, parallel to the tracks.
Then they'd have to walk up the railroad property to Brooklyn.
Well, if you're coming from the south side, you're going through the park.
Right.
And as you exit the tunnel to north side, you walk down along the tracks for about 100 yards.
To Brooklyn.
And then you pick up West Avenue and go north.
West Avenue, okay.
And maybe down the road, one of the comments you've made, that the river is getting a little more hard to handle, it might be necessary at some point to put a berm between Forest Avenue and the railroad bridge. Because that, that's basically the weak point or the low point for flooding. Water comes in between First, between Forest Avenue and the bridge.
There, I'd just like to say, Peter, there, we've talked about this before, and Peter Scolera was involved in this discussion, as was the chief at Bailey and other people. And I, some of the numbers are available to look at that. We went through, Peter actually reached out to the BNSF to find out, because they own the land, to figure out what the cost would be, what would, we would have to do, what the liability would be. So a lot of that information already exists, and at the time we said it was prohibitive. Well, some of us said it was prohibitive. Peter clearly didn't say that. So, so there is some preliminary work, if it wants to be, if you want to add it to the, the work plan. I just want to share with people that some of this, some people have been involved in that already. Thanks to Peter bringing, this Peter bringing it up.
There is some comments, like you'd have to be extra police work involved. Well, quite frankly, if you've got an open tunnel that is being used, you aren't going to have people living in it, like you do right now.
I guess I don't think, yeah, I appreciate that. I think those are the questions that should be raised, if it's added to the work plan.
But when you think about the benefits to the community, shorter commute type, commuting times, more free time for the parents, healthier conditions for the children, it's, I think it's a no-brainer.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Pollack?
Thank you, and I appreciate all the comments from the board, and it seems clear to me there's a lot of support for looking into this issue. I have talked to several people in the community about this in the last few weeks, and I'm very impressed with the ideas that I've heard from people that have kind of got me excited about the possibilities here. And this tunnel is even another one that I didn't even know about. So I think it's clearly something we need to look into and really throw everything out there, think outside the box, all those cliches, just, you know, really look at all possibilities, and not just a bridge or a tunnel. I mean, maybe there's another way to get pedestrians and bicyclists across First Avenue more effectively and safely. So I definitely want to move forward this. I guess I'm okay with working this under our existing structure with the Safe Environment Committee, as long as it's understood, there's a lot of people in this community who have a lot of background on this topic, a lot of knowledge. There's engineers and architects, and I would want to somehow be involved in this process. Maybe it ends up being a subcommittee of the Safe Environment Committee. I don't know, but starting with the Safe Environment Committee, I think is fine, and we go from there.
That was my comment also, is I think there's a lot of people that want to be involved in that, so I'd like it to be opened up within the Safe Environment. Maybe they set it up or whatever, but to allow other people to have that.
They can chef this.
Exactly.
So we're in agreement?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Any new business? We do not have a need for an executive session tonight, so I ask for motion to second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollack. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.